Good evening. Michelle, can I do a sound check with you?
Hi Christina. Okay. I can hear you just fine. I'm just, my new, having on my screens is changing how I share. So I'm just trying to get used to that.
Okay.
The stay informed during shelter in place?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Now, is there a way, Michelle, for everyone to see more videos of people and still see the screen?
Yeah, let me just, let me get the livestream going and then I can change the view. Okay, I'm gonna mute myself. Just give me a minute.
Sounds good. Christina, do you want us to stay on video or only if we're speaking? Stay on video.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Shane.
Yes. Hi Chief.
Thanks.
Okay, can you hear me? This is Chris.
Yes, Chris, we can hear you in great background picture.
Okay, I can hear Chris, but I can't see him. So I want to see the background picture.
Don, did you say you could not hear Chris?
I can't hear him, but I can't see him.
Oh, interesting, okay. Yeah, he was on.
This is the Mojave Desert, Don. It's where I'm at right now. I can't see you. I think I'm using the version of Zoom on this computer. If you could scroll, hit the thing to scroll right or left. I see Chris.
I see Don.
Michelle took off the shared screen.
You all labeled to see each other now?
Only when you remove the shared screen.
Hmm.
So Michelle, I think, I think what we'll do is we'll have you flash that when we get started. And everybody that's interested could take a picture of it. And then we'll remove it so that we can see more faces.
Okay, we can also post it on our timeline, on our social media.
That's great. Okay, well, just a time check for everybody. It's 5:28, 5:28. So we'll just wait a couple more minutes and then we'll go ahead and get started.
Sounds good.
It's nice to see all these faces that I haven't seen in a while. Hi Nick.
Hi Christina.
Hi. Okay, well, I'm noting that it is now 5:30. So I, let's go ahead and get started. A good evening Morgan Hill community. Thank you so much for joining us tonight for our very first online Zoom meeting, town hall meeting. I want to let you know about how tonight is going to work. I'm going to say a few introductory remarks. And then most of the time today will be spent on questions and answers that the community might have. And so the way that this works, at the bottom of most of your screens, you should have Q and A. And so you're able to go in there and type your question. And so between myself and Michelle Bigelow, we'll be able to go through your questions. And hopefully respond to them on this, at this meeting. If we need to follow up, we'll go ahead and do that. And if we run out of time, we'll try to get all of the unanswered questions answered. And so with that, I want to just let you know that your Morgan Hill team is working very diligently. Our community safe and healthy. We are maintaining our essential services. And for us, that means primarily public safety, so police and fire, as well as public works. Couple of updates. Yesterday, we imposed a moratorium on residential rate, excuse me, residential rent increases in our city. And that prohibits landlords from increasing rents from what they were on March 1st of this year. And this is now effective, and it will be effective until 60 days after the shelter in place orders are lifted. Another new item that we've implemented is curbside parking. And that's to allow individuals that are doing takeout at our restaurant downtown to have parking spots in front of the dining establishment. There's a wealth of information on our website. So if you haven't already, go to our website. And there's a lot of resources. There's a panel on the left-hand side, and it'll kind of direct you where you might want to go. Information for residents, information for businesses, and a lot of different links for the county, as well as information from the state. One of the hot off the press items is the county has had a dashboard on their website. And they have been letting us know that at some point, they're going to roll out information about the number of cases by city. And so that was rolled out just a bit ago today. You'll notice if you go to the website that Morgan Hill is not listed. And so if you read the fine details and the legend, what that means is that we have less than 10 cases. So anywhere between, you know, probably zero and nine. And so that's why Morgan Hill isn't listed. Dr. Sarah Cody, on a call that I was on yesterday, said even, you know, before that information was released, she wanted to make sure that people know, people would know that even though that information was out there, she didn't want people to think that they could go anywhere in the county, or the region for that matter, and be safe, that people needed to shelter in place. And if they go out in public, take all the necessary precautions. Because the COVID is basically very widespread in our community. So when you have time, go, go and look at that dashboard. It has, county has some great information as well as frequently asked questions. And so with that, let's roll right into Q and A. So go to, if you have questions, you can go to the bottom of your screen. And Michelle will help us out here to make sure that people are able to ask questions.
So if you will, Ray, you can press the raise your hand icon, which for most of you is in either lower right or upper right-hand corner. I can call on you as I see your hand raised. And you can also chat to the group and I can read those aloud. So if you don't prefer to speak, just, I'm going to chat your comments. What is the URL for the county COVID-19 site?
Okay, Maureen or Michelle, would you mind pulling that up? And maybe type it in there as well as state it?
Sure. So it's kind of a long one. So I'm gonna paste it in there in our chat. And then I can also read it.
Great.
So it is www.sccgov.org/sites/PhD/diseaseinformation/novel coronavirus pages/home ASPX. And I just put it in the chat to everyone participating.
And then we have a link to that on our website, if that's easier to get it that way. So the next question that has come in is, does Morgan Hill have any known cases of COVID-19? And so as the, as I mentioned on the dashboard, we're not listed, which means we have anywhere between zero and probably nine cases. Now, I am not aware of any cases in Morgan Hill that are confirmed cases. Now with that said, it is highly likely that we have individuals that have COVID that are at home, that they're being self-quarantined. They may have called their doctor and provided a list of what their symptoms are. And been told to stay at home and to not come into the hospital because their symptoms don't rise to a level that they need hospital care. And they're, you know, the hospitals, they're, they have plenty of hospital beds, but there's also a concern that there might not be enough room. And so we could have cases of people at home that do have COVID. But once again, I'm not aware of any specifically confirmed cases in Morgan Hill. Okay, the next question that has come in is, is there any testing station in Morgan Hill? And the answer to that is no, not that I'm aware of. But I'm going to ask Chief Hess, our fire chief, if he has any more information that he might want to share on, on testing.
That is, can you, can you hear me Christina?
Yes, thank you.
That is correct. We do not have a testing location in Morgan Hill. There are a number of locations in larger hospitals, in Stanford, in some of the larger hospitals in San Jose. But to my knowledge right now, Morgan Hill does not have a testing facility.
Thank you, Chief. A comment came in, Tracy says, I am aware of a known case in Morgan Hill. An 11-year-old girl confirmed tested positive under home quarantine. And so that, you know, that's not a, that's not a surprise, you know, that we do have those sort of cases potentially here. Okay, so our next one's coming in is how are our local restaurants handling the pandemic? Is there a campaign to drum up business carryout for them? Same question for all local businesses. So I'm going to start on this one. And then we have on, with this call today, we have Edith Ramirez, our Economic Development Director. And I also see Brittany Sherman, who's the CEO and President of Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. And so how are local restaurants handling the pandemic? So first off, many of our restaurants in town are open, and they're open just for, for takeout or for delivery. I'm not aware of any restaurants that, you know, they can't be open just for normal dine-in. So takeout and delivery. And so I'm going to turn it over first to Edith to say a few more words, and then Brittany to add to that, maybe talk about the Facebook group that you created that now probably has over 2,000 users. So with that, Edith, if you can, a couple of comments on that.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. You know, the restaurants are definitely feeling the hit of this situation. We have deployed a survey in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Morgan Hill, where we are asking the business community, how, what is the impact to them? And we are getting some of those responses. We are over 100 responses back. And certainly, we're seeing this impact on the restaurants that have to, many of them obviously reduced the number of employees. Some of them had to close. They're hoping to come back. I think one of the challenges for those restaurants is depending on how long the stay-at-home order is, is going to be the impact. From the city side, one of the requests that we received from the restaurant community was, can we allow the parking spaces in front of their business to be made available to takeout? That way, people are not being exposed by walking long distances to the restaurant. So we have shared a new regulation with the restaurants where they can put out signs that says for curbside parking only. And I think that that is going to be helpful. We are going to be brainstorming with the Chamber and the Downtown Association. We were on call with them this morning. An additional shop local campaign to figure out what are the other things. And Brittany, since you're on here, you can talk about the other things that the Chamber is doing to try to support especially the businesses that are not able to stay open or have takeout.
And Edith, before we turn it over to Brittany, the question also included local businesses about drumming up business for them. Any other comments for local businesses besides restaurants?
So I think that for, so we have some of the essential businesses that are, what, one, the retail businesses, the smaller retail businesses, what we're seeing is that they had just essentially had to close. It has been very difficult for them. And in some cases, they have, we have seen them trying to do takeout, delivery of goods, and that in itself has been challenging. Some of the other companies, the larger companies, they have limited workforce with essential work and work that is associated with, with the central industry at the moment. And I think that for the group, what we're thinking about is we recognize or could expect that even when people are able to come out, that there's going to be perhaps some reluctance. And what is it that we can do as a community to try to tell people, we're open for business, come downtown, come on shop local? So we're actively thinking about that right now. We welcome people's ideas and engagement. Certainly, there is a lot of need right now. So if people want to be part of that solution, certainly, we will happy, happily take that help.
Great, thank you, Edith. Brittany?
Everyone, Brittany Sherman, CEO, President, Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having me. And I actually want to give all the credit of the Morgan Hill Takeout and Delivery page to my associate Lori Allen, who's on Wave Your Hand, Lori. Lori, wave your hand.
She's smiling.
Not waving it. And so she, she created this page and manages it. The idea behind it is that the restaurants who are able to provide some kind of takeout delivery service, go on there, they become part of the group. They can post their menus, any specials, gift card discounts, all of that. And then we also encourage the residents and the patrons of those restaurants, when they do order something, to just take a fun picture, post it online, and also tag the restaurant. So in the last few weeks, I think that we've had it started. We've gone from zero members to, I think, we're almost at 3,000 now. So pretty amazing, the feedback that we've received from that. In order to kind of give a platform to the non-restaurant businesses, we've created the Don't Isolate Virtually Concrete page. And this page is more geared towards those, like Edith was saying, those retail, those retail outlets and other people that just aren't able to even do any kind of delivery at this point. So what they can do is they can upload pictures, YouTube videos, they can even do live classes. So we've had live karate classes on there. Just all kinds of different things where we just encourage not only businesses to have a marketing and a visibility platform, but also for our residents who are sheltering in home to, to have some kind of entertainment and be active and still communicate with the outside world.
Great, thank you, Brittany. Before we move on to the next question, Brittany and Edith, can you just give a quick plug for the roundtables and webinars that we're going to be doing?
Sure. And so one of the things that we, we want to do, and Brittany is doing a set of conversations as well through social media. But one of the ways that we wanted to help the business community is bring in experts that can speak to them on either topical issues. But in addition to that, we wanted to provide a platform for industry-specific businesses to come together and also share best practices amongst them. So we have put together a number of roundtables, Business Resiliency Roundtables. One for manufacturing, one for restaurants, one for tourism, one for retail. And we're also doing a roundtable on financial resources. There's so much information out there on financial resources is beyond overwhelming for the business community. So tomorrow, Friday at 2 o'clock, this webinar is going to be open. Feel free to share the link. It's open to anybody. And we're going to have representatives from SBA, the Small Business Administration, as well as SBDC, which is a great partner and is handling a lot of the handholding, if you will, to help businesses apply for grants or loans. And we're also going to have a representative from the Grow Morgan Hill Fund. So they can go to the city's website for the information to sign up for those roundtables.
Great, thank you, Edith. Brittany?
I mean, this is, this is pretty much, the roundtables are pretty much a project that are spearheaded by Edith and John of City Morgan Hill Economic Development. And supporting, helping, providing the community, getting that out to our various platforms. But in addition to that, we've been, we just launched our first one today where we had one of our Chamber members, Julie Klein Marketing. She came on and did about a 45-minute webinar presentation just on virtual, virtual marketing. So we had 31 people come on. We did record it, so we'll start pushing those out. So I think where Edith is doing kind of the roundtable push, we're doing kind of more of, kind of trying to highlight our members in those businesses that aren't essential, that, you know, that they can gain some visibility and marketing this way, and by helping the rest of our community kind of start to build some resiliency as well.
Great. Okay, so the next question that we have is, we have a group of volunteers willing to make masks for free distribution at grocery stores. But we'll need support from the city to collect finished masks and distribute to grocery store managers. So on, is, so Sam Cambo has, has asked about that. And I think what we want to do with that one is, Sam, could you please share your information, maybe send an email to our PIO email address? And we'll, we'll put you in touch with those that are helping us with volunteer efforts like this. And so we can let you know what resources are out there and how we might be able to help. But I think that's wonderful that, you know, people in the community are making these masks. The next one is, are there any stores with toilet paper in town? I didn't hoard, and I'm running low. I'm trying to stay away from stores, though. So just want to go get it or order it on Instacart. So from my experience, they're still sort of in some sort of rationing out the toilet paper and paper towels and things like that. Sometimes customer service has them. They're allowing everybody to take one. Online purchasing is another way to do it, or ordering it, you know, through Instacart, as you mentioned, or through Safeway. The supplies are coming back, you know, the, I think the message is there's really not a shortage. You know, there might be a shortage at our local stores. But hopefully, this will, will resume to a level of normalcy as it relates to these sort of things. The next one is, Safeway on Tenet supposedly had 6:00 to 9:00 AM Tuesday and Thursday for seniors. I was there on Tuesday. I'm 75, and majority of people in the store were way under 65, and most did not have masks on enforcement needed. Yeah, so as far as masks goes, that is something that Dr. Sarah Cody, our health official, came out with. It's the recommendation that when people go out in public for essential business, which means going to the grocery store, doctor's appointments, or even for recreational purposes, going for a walk, that they wear masks. Not the N95 mask, but rather any sort of fabric that would cover the nose and the mouth. It could be as easy as a bandana. And so that's encouraged for everyone. I'm sorry to hear that the experience was that, that it seemed like they weren't wearing masks. So I, you know, one of the things I would suggest there is just let Safeway know. And some of the stores I can see are doing some level of enforcement and asking people to abide by the rules that are in place. Do we foresee mandatory wear of a face mask in essential businesses? My understanding that it's not mandatory at this time, but rather it's a recommendation. Chief Palsgrove, Chief Hess, is that also what you've seen?
Yes, at this point, and if you look at what's been going on, it's a, coming down from the federal government, it's coming down from state government to the county and the cities. And so the spirit of that recommendation originated in Washington. And everybody in all the local governments, state government has adopted that recommendation. And really, the, I don't want to say the science behind it, but the, the reason behind that, and it came out later than we probably would have thought originally, is they've determined that there are probably so many more cases of people walking around who are asymptomatic with COVID. And I think that is starting to surprise folks with the, just the pure number of asymptomatic people where this disease does not affect people, certain people. And so the, there's two parts to that. One is, we were running low on personal protective equipment for first responders, healthcare workers. So those are the N95 masks, including the surgical masks. So the ask for the community was, and everybody I'm sure has seen this, is to either create, make, or like Christina said, is even a bandana. There's anecdotal evidence that the air droplets, respiratory droplets, you know, originally, it's keep your six feet distance. And that's what everybody is maintaining, which is what is helping right now in California. There's anecdotal evidence that it may be these droplets can go much farther than six feet. And so it's been a, we really have been encouraging people to wear their masks. The mandate for this, I really don't necessarily see a mandate. For the essential businesses, I can say for fire, is we have mandated our troops to wear a surgical mask when we are out conducting business in public, when we're not running an emergency medical call or a public service call. And that includes when we're in the fire engines and just conducting any business. And really, that's, like I said, it's twofold. There's a shortage, if you will, in surgical masks. We would love to have everybody in a surgical mask, if you put kind of best-case scenario. But the next best step and things that the public can simply do are just create those face masks when you are out in the public. It protects you from potentially a COVID respiratory droplets. And it also is protecting other people theoretically. So it's a little bit, well, is better than nothing, is what the spirit is behind that.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief Palsgrove?
The police department's also encouraged to wear the masks, especially when they're coming into contact with people. However, what we're experiencing right now is when police officers are wearing the masks and they're talking into their radios, as they do quite often, it's muffled. And so if they are using their hands without sanitizing them to move their masks every time they talk into their radios, that could also present problems and cause them to be ill. So right now, it's left up to each officer as discretion, and it's strongly encouraged.
Thank you. Our next question, there has been a noticeable dumping of used gloves and masks at our grocery stores. Can the city work with those businesses? Can the city work with those businesses to solve the problem, i.e. PSA sanitation support, et cetera? So Nick, can we unmute Nick for a moment? So it's my understanding that once you've used gloves and masks, you're not intended to wear them again. So I don't know if it's a couple hours on masks. And so I would see that those could be disposed of, but are you seeing something above and beyond that?
Yeah, we're actually seeing it in the parking lot. So when you go back to your car, it's just they're a mask in the parking lot, which is unsafe for everybody that obviously is going to those sites. So I'm not sure if there's anything we can be doing to be thinking about that, along with the workers that are obviously picking up the cars, bringing them back in. It's just coming, it could become a toxic problem for us. So I know we'd have to work with the businesses to help the coordination with that, but we should be thinking about that if it starts to increase.
Got it. Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Michelle posted a link about how to, about a recommendation on to wear face masks until they're more. The next question, how about for those people who are unavailable to pay their rent at this time? I would love to turn it over to our city attorney, Dawn Larkin. And I'll just give it a brief intro, and that is the county and the state have rent eviction ordinances that are on the books, which don't stop. So the payments still have to be made for rent, but eviction is not allowed. And so Dawn, would you please add to that?
Yeah, if a person is unable to pay rent because they're impacted by the COVID or the public health crisis, it's incumbent on the person to inform their landlord that they're having a financial issue due to the COVID emergency, but they can't be evicted for failure to pay rent for 120 days, depending on the date that the emergency is actually lifted. So if you can't afford to pay your rent, you should pay your rent. But if you're impacted by the public health crisis and you can't pay it, then you're responsible for informing your landlord. But then you can't be evicted and you can't be charged late fees or penalties for not paying rent. So, and that applies to, in Santa Clara County, that applies to both commercial rent and residential rent. So businesses who are shut down because of the shelter-in-place orders and are unable to pay their rent due to that shutdown also can get a reprieve. The tenant is still responsible for paying rent at some point, but they're allowed to defer those payments until things get back to normal and they're able to have an income and be able to make those payments. And if there are questions about that, this is a county ordinance. It's the county that would be responsible for enforcing it. But there are lots of other local public interest groups that would be interested and available and helping out. So if you are having those issues, then you can get in touch with us through the Concern page on our website or some other means. We can certainly help to put you in touch with the people that would be able to help you.
Great. Thank you, Dawn. Along those same lines, tomorrow is the property tax deadline. And property tax payments, they're not deferring that April 10th date. They are allowing partial payments, but penalties would accrue. And in order to prevent the penalties from accruing, you have to put in a request to have those penalties waived. And there's probably a certain criteria that has to be met. But nonetheless, payments are due tomorrow for property taxes. The next question is, is the city considering backstop grants for those small businesses that may not receive SBA loan support, i.e. the city of Long Beach? And so at this point, what we're doing is we are taking our staffing resources, our economic development team as well as some others, and spending time on putting resources in front of the businesses that need assistance. And at next week's council meeting, we'll have on the agenda a discussion about some follow-up items from our last council meeting. And we'll bring that question back to council. As we all know, and I think later on, there's going to be a question about budget. This budget is going to, excuse me, this pandemic is going to very directly impact our city budget and our city finances. I'll just start talking about that now in advance of that question. So basically, our primary sources of revenue are property tax, sales tax, and recreation revenue. Property tax, we're not going to see a decline in for the next couple of years because there's always a lag in property taxes, even we saw that with the Great Recession. Sales tax, on the other hand, we were going to experience that immediately. We'll find out the results from January through March, two months after that. And we already know that we're going to receive fractions of what we normally do. In addition to that, recreation revenues, everything from our membership to facility rentals, dramatic impact, dramatic reduction. In addition to that, transient occupancy tax or hotel tax revenue is going to be significantly less because people are not staying at the hotel. And so we're going to talk more about this at the council meeting next week. I'm going to be providing the council with an update, but I wanted to share that at this point. The next question is, has the city began revising the 20 budgeting based on COVID and circulating what projects, programs, services will likely be impacted for public comment? And so, yes, we are already looking at our budget. We are going to be sending out our first cut of our budget next week. And it's on the council agenda for April 22nd to introduce the budget. In that budget document, there's going to be a reduction to some of the revenue categories that I just mentioned. And in addition to that, there will be some expenditure reductions. But we're going to be following up that document with a list of additional recommendations on expenditure reductions. So our team right now is figuring out how to best mitigate the loss of revenue and mitigate the impact that that's going to have for us and figuring out strategically, what do we do? We have a reserve, but that reserve is limited. And we already have other unfunded liabilities that we're trying to address through the budget process. Now, the public is going to have an opportunity to engage with us. That'll begin on April 22nd, when we introduce the budget document. On April 30th, we'll have a community budget workshop. Of course, it'll be electronic, probably similar to this in the Zoom fashion. And then on May 15th, we have a council budget workshop, and that starts at 9 o'clock. And that's another opportunity. And we will provide opportunities online and in other ways for the budget, for the community to engage with us on the budget. A link to the SBA webinar tomorrow, if Michelle hasn't already, she can post that in the chat below. Internet service is very important, given the current circumstances. Spectrum service is very poor and often dropping service. Can the city put some pressure on Charter to improve their internet service? I have called tech support several times to no avail. Okay, so I know that Spectrum is trying to offer support for kids that are having to do online work from home and offering for new customers free service or discounted service. As far as the level, is there anyone on this call teammate-wise that can address if we've had to reach out to Spectrum? I'm going to see if, look to Chris, and if not, we can get back with this group about the quality of our Spectrum service right now.
I can answer if you'd like, Christine. It's Tony.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we know cable services are always the least favorite utility provider in every community. We've gone through great links to try to improve internet service. And those watching the council are obviously aware of all the things that we've done with RFPs and other things. At this time, someone is welcome to report a concern on the city's website, and we will forward that customer service complaint to Spectrum. But the city does not have the ability to force any improvements. Charter, Spectrum is very aware of their shortcomings, and I know they have acted to make things available. But that's the best that we can do at this time.
Thank you, Tony. The next question, do the rent eviction rules apply to mortgage payments as well? So the eviction, the ordinance at the county levels, well, the state level just applies to rent. And so what we've been doing is recommending that people that pay mortgages that are having trouble to work with their individual banks, or lenders for that matter. And many of the banks have provided relief. We polled our local banks, and in last week's council meeting, we had a report that provides a summary of what each of those banks are doing. Anything else, Dawn, on that?
Yeah, that one's a little bit more complicated because mortgage lending is governed by federal law. But, so there's not a lot that we can do. But the governor has negotiated with all of the major lenders and many, many of the minor lenders to get mortgage relief. In addition, if you have a traditional loan, which very few people in the Bay Area have because our housing prices are so high. But if you have a traditional loan, there are other protections that are available through the federal government.
Thank you, Dawn. Joe Berenowski, the comment on Charter dovetails back to the last city council meeting and the OK to proceed negotiating with WAVE for city facilities. It was mentioned that a special workshop focused on cities' medium and long-term broadband plans was necessary, was just checking that this hasn't fallen through the crack and would be scheduled when time permits. Yes, absolutely. We will be scheduling a workshop to further discuss the telecommunications priority that the council has and specifically how we're going forward with negotiations with WAVE. Edith, did you want to mention something else? Okay, next question. Are there any plans for DePaul to be an overflow site for COVID-19 cases should the needs arise? Should the need arise? Yes, and we have included that in some of our communications out to the community. And we're in close contact with the county. As a matter of fact, I spoke with Paul Lorenz. He's the CEO of Valley Medical just today. As a matter of fact, this afternoon. And so, as you know, the hospital site is vacant. There are medical offices there. And so there's quite a bit of room there. And so what they're doing now is they're assessing the building, and they're pulling out all of the equipment and property that was in there and basically clearing out the space. He told me today that it will probably take about six weeks to get to the point where they're done. Now, they haven't decided exactly what that space would be used for, not necessarily COVID-specific, but he referred to lower acute patients, resuscit care. Now, if they don't end up needing this facility now, we believe that it's going to help us in the long run as far as medical services go because it means that they're getting that place up to the place where it is suitable to have people in there. All along, prior to this COVID pandemic, they've talked to us and they're planning to engage with the community when the time is right and when we can about plans for what they envision there. And so prior to this, what they had talked about was expanding the urgent care services that they have and looking at pharmaceutical services. So right now, there's no pharmacy on site, so you have to leave and go somewhere else, expanding the diagnostics and x-rays and in looking at other service lines that might be needed. Okay, and then Michelle copied and pasted in some information that we've provided about what that space might be used for. And Michelle, am I, I don't see anything else by way of questions?
There was just one I saw where somebody was asking if testing was in Morgan Hill. I'm not sure if you addressed that.
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, perfect. I think we're up to date. I did just post the web address for Charter for those that would like to submit their concerns.
Okay. Anybody else? Would you like to submit a question? We still have plenty of time. Or if there's any area that you want to just hear about generally?
Mr. Berenowski has his hand up.
Okay.
Joe, if you'd like, you can go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah. Joe?
This is a little in the weeds, but since there's time. A few planning commission meetings ago, there was a meeting to start addressing the change in how traffic studies are going to be done. That was required by the state to begin in July. Has the state put that on pause where that won't happen? And it's kind of a two-part question. If the state has, and has the city, and doesn't matter, meaning are projects, are development projects proceeding per normal, even though everything else is shut down? Those are my couple of questions. Thank you.
Sure. Leslie or Dawn, would you please address that question?
So this is Leslie Little. I'm happy to address part of this. And if John is there and he wants to add anything, please do. The first question is, has the state put on hold the timeframe for conversion from level of service, which is, we call it LOS, Level of Service, that we've used for traffic analysis for many, many years in the environmental review process and project review process? And they're converting it to something called vehicle miles travel, the BMT. And the answer is no. And in fact, yesterday, we just got another reminder that, in fact, the schedule hasn't been paused and that the summer date for implementation is still something that the state is moving forward with. So that kind of answers the first question. Secondly, are we continuing to process projects and take them in? We now have been able to create a limited virtual permitting function. And so we are permitting some projects and moving them forward consistent with the county order. We are processing housing projects, which have affordable housing components in them of greater than 10% first and making those our priority. But we continue to process as long as we have folks at home and processing from home other projects that are in our development queue.
Thank you.
Just to add on to the answer, though, I think we won't be issuing new building permits for new projects that come in because construction for most projects other than affordable housing projects is halted right now.
Dawn, I just wanted to clear up, though, we are issuing new building permits for new affordable housing projects.
For projects that come in, we're not going to be issuing building permits.
Okay, we were asked to repeat the testing availability question. So Chief Hess, would you just, in summary, just explain what's going on with testing and letting everybody know that we don't have a testing capability in Morgan Hill, but what individuals can do that need to be tested or want to be tested?
Sure, there's a lot of nuances to this. So I'm going to bring up and read through one of the Santa Clara County's memorandums that they sent out. And hopefully we'll clarify. I was just looking at it.
Chief, while you're looking, do you want us to answer another question?
I have it up.
Okay, great.
So on March 27th, the county sent out their COVID testing memorandum. And something to just keep in mind, and I'll read here a couple of the bullet points, is the county of Santa Clara's public health department will provide COVID-19 testing for individuals from the following groups. When they are symptomatic with fever or lower respiratory symptoms, it's important to note that the test is not validated for use in asymptomatic individuals, so people without symptoms. And testing those without symptoms may give falsely reassuring negative results. So they're looking at, their priorities are hospitalized patients with critical illness. And then it goes to hospitalized patients with no alternative explanation for the respiratory illness, healthcare workers, including EMTs, paramedics, first responder types, all other first responders, law enforcement, fire, and then employees and residents of long-term care facilities. And that's skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities. So as far as the member of a public who feels like they need to get tested, from what I've been told is that it's a low priority for asymptomatic folks. You'll have a hard time finding a test. And it goes on here where it says, you need to contact your primary care physician, is really where they're circling the public back to. And their primary care physician will help route that individual to a testing facility in the county if they, in fact, meet those symptomatic qualifications, if you will. And in the very beginning, it had a travel one in there, of course. That's kind of gone away. And that, in the very beginning, it had a travel one in there, of course, that's kind of gone away. And now it's based on fever, it's based on cough, and then how high is your fever? And then underlying medical conditions also, diabetes, hypertension, some of these under, these other underlying medical problems that we've seen, of course, in the news that this disease is really taking advantage of a lot of folks who have compromised immune systems or underlying medical conditions. So that's, that's not really a great answer for the public other than they're really encouraging you to circle back to your primary care physician who can then make that determination. And really, it's going to be a priority base because the testing is not as available as you think it would be. We've even struggled as a fire agency to get tests. One of our pilots was actually meeting the criteria and we were able to get him tested and it did not happen overnight like you think it would. And that came back today. Luckily, it was negative, so.
Thank you. Okay, Chris, this one's going to be for you. Any plans in the works to repair roads and widen highways while many are working from home and off the highways? This may not be a topic for here, but any info from outside agencies. So Chris, maybe you could talk about our own roads and then anything else that you're hearing about plans at the state level.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Christina. For our own roads, we, the major repairs that we do actually take a lot of planning. So we do one major pavement renovation project a year and that happens during the summer. So that project's still moving forward in the bidding process, but there's not a real way we can accelerate that work quickly as we have to follow the public contract code to bid that project. But that still is underway. And then we still very much are working from home, but working towards finalizing a funding agreement with VTA for Measure B funding for the Hale Avenue extension, which we've acquired all the property for. And that would construct Hale Avenue between Main Avenue and DeWitt, where DeWitt and Spring are, that's been planned for many years. So we hope to begin construction on that this summer as well. We have a few other projects that we're still working through the furlough, or sorry, not the furlough, through the shelter in place to plan for. But most of those projects we tend to schedule and plan for, for the summer, to try and do when school's not in. So there's not an easy way for us to accelerate and do it now. I will say that our maintenance team is out there filling potholes and redoing striping on a smaller scale. So on our end, those are the big things within the city that we're doing. We are involved in ongoing regional discussions for prioritizing regional dollars to support improvements to roadways. We are very much advocating for the expansion of Highway 101 between Gilroy North to Cochran Road. We've advocated for that for some time and it's in Caltrans' long-term plan, but not yet funded by the state. So we continue to advocate for that as the major roadway which we think could solve much of the traffic congestion. Those are the major roadway items we have. And then, of course, we're advocating for increased public transportation from our regional partners as well.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so the next question. By not extending the property tax deadline, the county is going to get some large influx of cash. Will Morgan Hill see some of this? If so, what are priorities and how are they determined? Or is most of the cash going to service existing debt at the county level? So we will receive what we've more or less budgeted for by way of property tax revenue. So we receive, so if you're, keep things simple, assessed value is a 1%. We receive 10% of that 1%. It becomes one of our tax revenue sources. And we have already programmed out our expenditures by way of our adopted budget. And so from a property tax perspective, we should be receiving what we've budgeted. So we're not going to have any sort of influx of cash, nor will the county or the school by not, you know, just by virtue of having those property tax payments made as scheduled. So hopefully that makes sense. And that's really why the county and the state, you know, said no, property taxes have to be collected as scheduled because these agencies rely on these dollars for providing the services that we all provide. The next comment, I would like to recognize the people working at the grocery stores, restaurants, city personnel, and all essential services. They knowingly place themselves at risk. Thank you. Wow, that's a spot-on comment. Thank you for making that statement. For all those individuals right now that have to work, we appreciate each and every one of them and we need to thank them in any way that we can. Perdote provided a link to the state website that gives information about banks and other lenders that have agreed to provide the mortgage and fee relief. The next item, are seasonal centennial recreation workers, my daughter works part-time year-round as a lifeguard, are they getting paid by the city of Morgan Hill during the COVID-19 shutdown? Or can they apply for unemployment? Okay, so this is a question that's a, it's a very good one and it's a very evolving question. And so I'm going to look to Michael Horta, our HR director, to respond to this.
Hi, good evening. So in response to that, so we are still receiving guidelines and procedures from the Department of Labor to determine, not just for our part-time teammates, for all our teammates, any leaves or payment due to COVID-19. However, in regards to unemployment, they definitely can apply for unemployment as a seasonal employee of ours for the city since they are not receiving payment at this time.
Okay. And the comment says, I agree with Larry England. Thank you. And that was for recognizing the essential workers. For folks who have been tested without health benefits, how can they seek assistance to cover the cost? Okay, so this is somebody that's been tested for COVID. They've had to make some sort of payment for that. They don't have medical coverage. How can they seek assistance to cover the costs? My best recommendation is to check in with the county to see if there's any resources out there that are available to cover that cost. Thank you to all those who are helping our community to protect us during the coronavirus pandemic outbreak. Thank you, Christina, for stating that. Okay, any other questions?
Christina, for the question about people without health insurance who might have tested positive, I would recommend people go directly to Valley Medical Center because, because they will, number one, they treat anybody regardless of ability to pay. And number two, they have very good resources for connecting people with whatever health insurance that they might be eligible for.
Yeah, and the county is who runs Valley Medical and they are the, the county is now the one, is the owner of DePaul Health Center, St. Louis, as well as O'Connor. Okay, I don't see any other questions. And so if this town hall was something that this group liked and wants to do again, please maybe just send a quick email in response to the email blast that we sent out today reminding everybody that we did this and we'll use that feedback to determine whether or not and if we should have these and how often. If you're not already receiving information from us, I encourage you to sign up to receive updates. We do updates about once a week through our 411 channel. That's the weekly update that will come from Maureen Tobin, our Communications and Engagement Director. And that's the one that we do recurring every week. In addition to that, during this COVID pandemic, we're also sending out email blasts as we have information that we believe is relevant. So those have been every other day, every two, three, four days, depending upon the information that is available. I do see a couple more questions that I'd like to go ahead.
There's one question I saw that I think is important to answer. There was a question about landscaping and fire marshal ordering people to remove brush. Routine landscaping is not considered essential by the county under the order, but any landscaping that's required for fire safety or weed abatement, tree trimming that's necessary to prevent limb drops, those types of landscaping services can continue. And should continue.
Okay. I got a comment that said, would be good to see our city council members as well. So I do know that there's a couple of council members on this. This is meant to be a town hall and not a council meeting. And so please join us next Wednesday, April 15th. We are having a council meeting. It is a Zoom meeting just like this. And I would welcome your participation at that meeting. Another question about mushroom Mardi Gras, has it been postponed? Unfortunately, the answer to that is yes. Mushroom Mardi Gras has been canceled and not postponed. There's not another date this year that they're planning to do it that I'm aware of. And the rest are thanks. Have there been any arrests for violation of the stay-at-home order in Morgan Hill? Chief Pausgrove?
No, there haven't been any arrests charging anybody with violation of the order. With that said, we have had 86 calls come in regarding complaints. And I'll give you a quick breakdown of that. Thirty-two of them have been non-essential businesses or work. Majority of those have found to be essential businesses because they were providing services that were deemed essential. Social distancing, we've had 26 calls, gatherings and parks, six calls. Gardeners or landscapers, 11. Construction, six calls, price gouging, two calls. And miscellaneous reports count for three of them. We have had a couple of companies that weren't deemed essential businesses. And what our procedure is, is to contact them, give them a warning. If it's something egregious, on the second time, we'll start working with the District Attorney's Office to send a letter. Otherwise, we'll give two or three warnings before we have the DA's office send a letter and put them on notice if they're a business or if it's a social distancing problem, say in a park and the kids aren't listening. We would consider a citation at that time. But to date, no, we have not made any arrests or citations for violations of the shelter in place.
Thank you, chief. There was a comment about the Garlic Festival. And unfortunately, that also has been canceled and not postponed, but rather they're looking forward to next year's. Are parks off limits or just shared equipment playgrounds? Chris, do you want to make a couple of comments about what's going on with the parks?
Yeah, all the parks are still open for people to use appropriate social distancing per the order. The playgrounds have been closed and taped off. Basketball courts are closed and taped off as well. The dog park is closed and the skate park is closed. And that was, we had direct direction to do that. We hope that people, when they use the parks, can use it for the activities that they should, which is, you know, walking through the parks, doing other light activities with their, you know, family unit as directed by the county, but not using them for gatherings. And we do want to thank the community. And I think Chief Pausgrove mentioned, we have not had a large number of complaints in our parks, which many other cities have seen where people are not following the rules. So we really do appreciate the community taking that seriously and following the rules in the park. And we hope to be able to keep the parks open because everyone's doing that.
Great, thank you. Does the city have an altruistic doctor who would host a free webinar like this to answer basic health questions? Emergency rooms are to be avoided. So the city doesn't have any doctors on staff, but that's a good question. You know, do we have doctors in the community that would, that are hosting, you know, webinars with information? I know a lot of the doctors and medical offices are doing Skype appointments. Any other comments, Don, or the chiefs, that you've seen anything else in the medical world?
Christina, it's Jake. I have not seen anything like that. I also would just want to circle back, any recommendations or things like that? There's, to circle back to the county Public Health Department and all the information that they've been sending out is probably the most up-to-date and appropriate for the county.
Right, thank you.
Christina, I just wanted to add on to what Jake was saying. The county Public Health Department, every morning, I believe at 10 o'clock on Facebook, Monday through Friday, is having an update, including, you know, our Public Health Officer speaking. So that would be solid health information that we know we can count on in this area that we live in. So just, and is available just like this on Facebook.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that includes, concludes our first town hall meeting. Thank you for participating and we will try to do this again. Have a great rest of the evening and stay safe.